All right. School Board meeting for Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. And we are starting at 6 o'clock PM. Chad will not be with us tonight. So we will do, the rest of us are here and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Does everybody have a pen or something to write with?
Mm-hmm.
We have some changes to the agenda. All right, so let's start with, under number 10, where it says the consent agenda. 10A is supposed to read approval of December 20th, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Okay. And then, under discussion items on the back, Discussion F is, we're going to talk about having a work session on the budget. On 9G, there will be a motion to declare a vacancy on the school board. And 9H will be a discussion and possible action on open seat procedures. So F, work session budget. G, motion. H, discussion. Have you got that? Okay. Now, does anybody else have any further changes to the agenda? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the changes to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the agenda.
Seconded.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes. All right, so then we will move on to approval of the agenda. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
All in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. I did not hear of any public input. You did not get anything? Okay. So we'll move on to number seven. Recognition and good things happening. The National Bus and Van Driver Appreciation Day is February 22nd, 2023. I have an ongoing bulletin board going on upstairs adding to the different groups that are being appreciated. And I put them on there as well as custodians and cooks. And then I ran out of S's, so I went and talked to the secretaries, told them theirs is coming, but I ran out of S's. So, anyway, we do very much appreciate our van drivers and our bus drivers. And, you know, they need more than a day of recognition, certainly in the, but that's what's happening. Thank you to our bus and van drivers.
I think they get the day off tomorrow.
I think they might get the day off. I think so.
Well planned.
Yeah. And then, February is I love to read month. This is an entire month dedicated to promoting the love of reading and being read to. We want to take a moment to remind everyone to continue to engage in literacy activities at home and at school this month and every month.
One thing with that one, I love on Facebook watching when the kids reach their reading goals. They do the running through the hallway.
Yes. I agree with you. All right. Just put on here, reading goals, recognition. Yeah, that's fun. All right, so now we're to eight reports. Student representative report.
I have it.
Okay.
Because, a girls playoff game tonight, so that's why Jen is not here, so that's going on tonight. Basically, this week and kind of what they've been preparing for is FFA week. On today, or Tuesday, was kickoff day with PJ day, some trivia, started the medallion hunt, and sugar cups were sold at lunch. Tomorrow, well, it would have been tomorrow, would have been community day, farmer hick day, get your farm clothes, bibs, straw hats, cutouts, and more. The school transportation, drivers thank you event, more trivia, more sugar cups being sold. So Thursday is supposed to be dressed for the trades day. Construction, work belts, hard hats, if you have them, wear them, show up for trades. FFA scholarship pancake breakfast at 7:00 to 9:00 down the eggroom, that's this Thursday. And then wrap it up on Friday, FFA pride day, blue and yellow, FFA T-shirt day. And then winners for your, for the trivia and different prizes. And then there'll be a FFA pep assembly at the end of the day on Friday. So, it's kind of what's kind of Jen gave me to report on.
Okay, thank you. And probably a lot of that's going to change.
Yeah.
Yeah. With the weather. Okay, thank you. And then, staff report, student services team.
If Trevor has time, he was going to come down.
All right, we'll just, if he's able to come in, we'll just pop in and do that when he gets here, okay? So let's go right to principals report.
All right, so last week, maybe, I think it was, I went to Winona State to, we had opportunity to go down consortium schools and other schools in the state, go to recruit student teachers. What we did was we each had our own table. And then students got to come to our table, we got to interview them. They signed up in advance, what kind of area they, you know, what area they wanted to be at. So I got to interview about 10 students that entire day. And I have more future visits. We're looking at trying to set some up with Augsburg and Mankato State and any other school that will do that. But Winona State has been really good at doing that, allowing principals to come down and try to recruit their student teachers, get them in our buildings, stuff like that. So, some of the things I thought were interesting, you know, we talked about, obviously, there's a teaching shortage. When I did this before COVID, I'd say maybe 10 years ago, you'd go to a big ballroom and there'd be hundreds of teachers. We were in a different section of the Winona State and it was just kind of like a big room. And I'd be surprised if there was 75 teachers or student teachers that you could choose out of. Out of the 10 that I interviewed, two were math. The other, there was two or three special ed and then the rest were elementary ed. So that was the only really diversity I found on who's teaching. So, it is, there is a decline. But some of the obstacles, I had talked to some people in here already a little bit. Some of the obstacles we found out of the difficulties of getting student teachers here is really our location. When the teachers want to do their student teaching, they want to live at home. They don't want to pay for that extra boarding. So, the problem is, so I had two out of the 10 that really wanted, I had a high school and elementary that really wanted to come here. The problem is they lived, one was on, was by Grenada and one was by Mankato. Well, if they're going to drive this far, they hit Alden in Glenville, real, who's in our consortium that work together, they really hit those schools an hour before they get here. So, so what we're finding is that transportation. Now, something that we do in the consortium different than the other schools is the principals are all trained as university supervisors. So what would happen is a university would pay the supervisor $1,000 to be the university supervisor. Well, what we do is we don't take the money, we give that back to the student. So, that's kind of incentive, say, hey, if you need to pay your rent, that's one thing we do. And then the other thing we started to brainstorm on is could we start, the consortium is talking about this. So it's just in discussion mode right now. But could we do like homes, like could people offer up, you know, could a student teacher stay with somebody, you know, in Leroy for the two months while they're student teaching? So, that's, we're trying to figure out how can we get more student teachers down here and things like that? Because we're not getting, Iowa universities and colleges won't, aren't sending up to Minnesota to do student teaching. It's those Minnesota schools, so. Really our location, so we are brainstorming how to get more student teachers down here, which hopefully would help recruiting the teaching process. So, that's something we, we talked about, so I just wanted to keep you guys informed that we're out there actively doing that. So, hopefully I get at least two more schools I can go to here in the next month or two. Also, a couple weeks ago, I went up to the state principal convention for the, I kind of best class called, Minnesota Elementary School Principal Association. They have a high school one, but I only go to one, I switch every other year, I go to a high school one because it's like three days, it's two, and it's usually three days, but I think I leave Wednesday after school. So I've only gone two days out of that, out of that deal. And I was, we had some RCD things up there, the Responsibly Centered Discipline, where it's part of a breakout session. And then I did my first national podcast. When that's available, hopefully I'll get, I'll share that on our website when those become, they're putting those together to promote the schools that do an RCD around the country. And they're getting, doing interviews with the principals. So I'll get that on our web page when I get it, I don't know when that will be. Also finishing up, second round of teacher evaluations. Started putting together registration guide already for next year. We will be continuing with the same type of registration format where we'll do Zoom. Seems like a better participation, it's easier for parents just to jump on at home, ask questions and come in. So we'll continue to do that when we get everything put together. Just some reminders, all of our student support systems we have in place here with our SPED program, our 504 plans, we're a title school, Target Services After School, tutoring, intervention time, seat time, elementary math interventionist, Reading Core, summer school, which is partnership with SMEC, SMEC Academy, partnership with SMEC. And then we do win time at the high schools, that's what I need with the middle school, high school students. Just a summary reminders of all the things we do for teacher accountability when I do evaluations and walkthroughs and all those type of things, it's teacher observation cycle, walkthroughs, classroom visits, peer reviews, weekly missing assignment procedures that we do, intervention time for students, PLCs, daily objectives posted, creating curriculum based on state standards, staff development days, one-on-one meetings and review lesson plans, and also our staff meetings. Something we're doing right now, when we get that, after we got back in January, is we MCA test preparation. We're setting the test windows. MCAs will be scheduled for the middle to end of April. And then we're also working on testing skills with the kiddos. Student Service Center, I continue to work with them continuously, improving missing assignments procedures and our attendance procedures. I'm working with Georgina, putting together a college fair, career fair schedule that's consistent every year. We want to set something up so we know freshmen do this every year, sophomores do this every year, juniors do this and seniors do this. So we are trying to work with, set up some consistency with that right now. Right now, I believe the juniors are going over to the SMEC career fair. And we are, and the twins also put on a career college fair. And I can't, I can't remember if we send sophomores and juniors to that or just one of those two. So we're trying to get each grade level to have at least one, if not two opportunities throughout the year for college and career.
Are we going to send, who'd you say we're sending to the SMEC one?
Juniors.
Juniors.
Yes.
Juniors and seniors.
And maybe seniors, I gotta see whatever they set it up and let us know.
Yeah.
So, we'll take whoever they let us take.
Right. I think he indicated juniors and seniors were welcome.
Then we will take, we'll take anybody they'll let us.
Perfect.
That's it. Any questions?
This is helpful, I like this.
I'm gonna, I, I did this long, long time ago and I'm assuming, I'm going to go back to it.
Yes.
That way you guys have it in front of you and that way you don't have to remember what I say. So, I will, I will continue to do these.
Thank you very much. All right, Jennifer, is she on?
Hi guys.
Hi.
For some reason, I can see all of you, but it sounds like you can't see me.
Nope.
Is that true?
That's true.
That's true.
Oh, shoot, shoot. Well, I am here and I have been, so I apologize, I don't know, but I can see all of you. Okay, well, I have quite a few things to share tonight, so I'll get started. First and foremost, of course, school is closed tomorrow. I'm sure you had heard a real large roar up in the cafeteria in the gym when you heard the text message go out. We'll continue to keep the district, our staff and school board members updated as we watch webinars tomorrow, but Thursday isn't looking promising either. But we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Couple things, the next staff development day is March 31st. That's a multi-grade, multi-grades will be teaming together to further discuss our science curriculum specifically, because that will be our purchase. We are just wrapping up this year for all English Language Arts purchases. Tina Offen, you maybe saw on our Facebook page, she was our staff to spotlight in February. And Barbie Taylor will be in March, so that's been a fun thing that we do. Iron Horse Marathon, another fun thing, the last three years, the Iron Horse Marathon, it starts in Leroy on May 6th between 5:00 AM and 7:00 AM. And we have partnered with them the last three years in this event by allowing the use of our bus garage and bus lavatories, bus barn lavatories and the dirt park, parking lot in front of that for any use that they need. So it's a really neat community partnership and fun to watch, too. We're already thinking about next year, Winter Concerts 2023. The winter concerts have been scheduled, so middle school, high school concert is going to be held on Monday, December 11th at 7:00. And the elementary concert on Monday, December 18th at 6:30. Tonight, you guys will be looking at the first draft of next year's calendar. Again, it's our first draft, but Erin and I sit on the Consortium Administrative Council, all the principals, all the superintendents do. And we talk at length about how we can somewhat make our calendars relatively the same. And so in front of you is what a lot of school boards are seeing in the next, probably the next month or two. You can plan for next month to have the final draft. Is there any changes from this first draft to next month's drafts? I will surely let you know that. We're not anticipating any, but again, there might be an alert, you know. Let's see, oh, I'm supposed to remind you, all the chicks have been born. Tina Offen wanted me to remind you with her last presentation last month, the chicks are born. So please feel free to reach out to her if you want to see some cute YouTube videos or pictures. This is some really cool news, I got a text message from Axel Gumbel. MPR reached out to him, Minnesota Public Radio reached out to him. They want to do an extensive interview and report on RCD, our nationally acclaimed model, Responsibly Centered Discipline. So they're going to collaborate with him, Erin and I, on, to facilitate a, a radio talk show essentially here in the upcoming months. I, I can't tell you the exact date, we don't know that yet. But when I find out, I will surely let you know. Last week, or the last few weeks, I've been mentioning some legislation to you. A lot of it, of course, we are really, most of us superintendents and business managers are really, really focused on what's going to be on the formula. The formula is the amount of money per student we get. We hover around that 68,000 a year per, or 6,800, I apologize, 6,800 a year per student. Right now, the main discussion is about 5% on the formula for two years. Boy, my fingers are crossed on that, folks, I hope yours are too. That way we can do a lot of great things with that money. We always assume about 2%, so we're pretty conservative in our budget building. But yes, I will continue to keep you updated on any odd legislative things that are happening. And I will also, as I've been doing, is sending links to certain bills that directly, or would eventually directly affect Leroy. I won't send you things that are related specifically to Minneapolis or St. Paul, those public schools, but sure enough, I will Leroy that I think might be impactful. In front of you tonight and during your tour, you will have your LTFM facilities draft document. So take that with you as you walk around, take notes, ask questions. Send me questions after the tour if you so choose. You know, about what you're seeing and what you like, what you need, what we should maybe have discussions on as a full board in terms of our facilities and our ground. So take that with you and take a peek at that. Let's see, also, you sent on my email to all of you, the kindness posters. Those pictures that I sent you are posters that were created by the 7th and 10th grade health classes. They're made for all the staff for Random Acts of Kindness Week. So you're going to start seeing more and more of that. Erin just recently sent out an email to our school district to start using the kind wall. And you see that as you walk down the hallway, where you're at, to start using that, start taking pictures, things like that. Because we really want to promote that. Deb brought up an agenda item that we're going to address tonight, and I fully support this idea of having a work session on the budget. Considering we have multiple new members on the board, not just Dave and Kyle, but other new members that maybe have not been in a position of treasurer or in a business management position. We'd like to have that discussion. Kristy is all on board with it, our business manager as well. We'd be willing to present a PowerPoint as well as provide any data you so choose, such as the things I'm sending you. I was talking to Deb today about, you know, I sent out very lengthy emails related to the budget, whether it's positions or recently ADMs versus enrollment, things like that. But at a work session where more informal questions can be asked, and we want to be able to do that for you. So tonight, that'll come in front of you and, and I hope you support that idea because we'd be very happy to share. And, and also, we're, we're always very happy to, you know, make sure misinformation isn't out there. We're, we're very willing to talk about our budgets and enrollment and, and all that as I have in my emails, but we'd be willing to do that at a work session as well. Speaking of, in your board packets, no action tonight. We want you to take some time and look at a draft budget analysis document that we feel is more historic and comprehensive for the board. So take some time to look at that. I'll bring it up again next month, so we can maybe have a discussion on it and see if this is how you maybe want to move forward. I know more information should be in front of you, but it needs to be relevant information for you, what you're voting on, you know, what you approve every month. So we want to make sure we encapsulate all that information on that document. In June, early June, Erin and I, similar to last year, we did do the Region 1 Emergency Management System Analysis up in Rochester. There's keynote speaks, speakers, exercises, classroom exercises related to what you can do in school to continue to make safety a priority. Whether it is, you know, we have a mock school shooter drill or a tornado drill, whatever it may be. But this is a great opportunity for us to get the most relevant and new information from our state department. So we will head to that. Another neat thing, and Erin, you may have cut out when you addressed this, but Erin and a few other staff are logging on to a webinar on Thursday, March 2nd. It's called Demystifying Photological Versus Phonymic Awareness. Erin, did you mention that tonight?
I did not, I did not.
Okay, okay, so we have staff that are, are going to be doing that. And that's relatively speaking, it's more about our elementary teachers. But, you know, it's a free webinar, we're jumping on it and going to hopefully get some really, you know, valid information from that. Huge shout out to Dylan Emerson. He has been working his tail off, not only helping us through that $57,000 grant and making sure our iPads are ready to be switched out, but he also has been working on our TVs and cabling installs this week. So we have a vast technology budget and so we're always peeling from that as new technologies emerge outside the grant we wrote. So there will be new TVs and cabling in a bunch of classrooms around the building. So he has been working rather feverishly on, on that too. So Dylan, thank you for that. The next, our next, Erin and my next video is supposed to be held this past Wednesday, or no, I can't remember. Yes, last, I'm sorry, last Wednesday. Axel was going to come in and do a video and then something came up. And so we are hoping to have a video out by next week. That's our monthly video, just to address any topics that come forward. Let's see, I just have, I think, one or two more things. The next thing is, we held our World's Best Workforce meeting last week and attended by a community member, staff members, Erin and I, our student representative was there. And great meeting, we had a PowerPoint presentation, talked about ADMs versus enrollment, talked about performance measures and outcomes, strategic priorities when it comes to instruction and student learning. We also talked about career and college readiness and the legislative components with that, that we must follow. School readiness, third grade literacy and the report that we submit every year to MDE. And of course, the importance of closing our achievement gaps. We had a lengthy discussion about that as well. So, we will continue to keep the board updated on that as we go because we're already starting to work on the report for next fiscal year, starting July 1. Let's see here, I will continue, I know I started with this tonight, but I surely will continue to update you as the weather continues to be somewhat of a pain this winter. But I will continue to update you on that. Oh, one final thing, I neglected to mention that. Tonight, there will be a resolution in front of you. I'm saying this now in case I lose any connection with you, I don't think I will. But the resolution was sent to your board packet and Chairwoman Rayburn will be reading that tonight. That is for reduction in programs. That does not by any means mean we are having to reduce programs. It means if, what if we are, what if we find that we need to cut fact in a certain area, we have the ability to do that. And of course, you would all be notified on that anyway. But it's giving us the ability to say, hey, you know what, we're too much in this area, too small in this area, so we're cutting over here, not here. So that's what that resolution is. Please do not think it's we're doing cuts. We may, but not tonight. We're not ready for any of that discussion at this point. Otherwise, have a great night and please stay safe out there. The roads were treacherous between, well, Leroy and my home this, this afternoon, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. All right. So, next on our agenda is a building tour. And we should bring these with us so we can make note of things that we want to.
Erin, if I could jump in, I apologize, there's a little pause there, sorry Deb, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's all right.
Erin, could you text me when you guys return? Because I'm going to make this black and then I'll jump back on.
Cap?
Thank you.
All right, building tour. Do you think we need to wait for Jen to come back on?
Yeah, she left, but I'm not sure.
I just texted her, I said we're back, so.
Okay. Do you want me to wait for her to indicate she's back on or we're doing consent agenda next?
Is there anything you'd need her for on that?
I think it looks like we could do that.
So, you think we can go with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's move to number 10, consent agenda. And as we noted, A was changed to approval of the December 20th, 2022 meetings. And that was in our board packet, that, so hopefully you had a chance to look at that. And then approval of the December 27th, 2022, regular meeting, I think that should say special, shouldn't it? Yeah. Thank you. That should say special meeting. And that was when we were finishing up talking about strategic plan. So, that was in our board packet as well. And then, the treasures report. We had the February bills and January wires, January treasures report and bank reconciliation, budget summary and student activity fund accounts. Fundraisers, junior class wants to do a tip night at Sweets and/or Pizza Ranch to offset the cost of prom. They'd like us to prove it and then date to be determined. Personnel, we have two of our paraprofessionals retiring. So, in the consent agenda, approval of the retirement of Jody Lunning, paraprofessional, effective June 2nd, 2023. of the Retirement of Jody Lunning, Paraprofessional, effective June 2nd, 2023, and the Approval of the Retirement of Eileen Boynia, Paraprofessional, effective June 2nd, 2023. And our recognition of them and appreciation of them will come at the close of this year. So right tonight, we have to just approve, approve the retirements. So, I'm looking for a motion for the Consent Agenda.
I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. So now we're on to number nine, Discussion and Action Items. So I attended the Policy Committee, and they went through all of these things. We had tabled 603 and 604 for some further discussion, and got, had a good discussion about that, and the Policy Committee moves that we do approve that at this time. And then 709, 722, 806, and 903, they are all in their second readings. There were no changes to be found at the policy meeting. Does anybody have any questions regarding any of those policies? All right, so I would take a motion to accept the second reading of the policies 603, 604, 709, 722, 806, and 903.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of policy 603, 604, 709, 722, 806, and 903.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll go with Kyle this time? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So then we move on to Policy Review, the first reading of the policies, and that was number 904, Distribution of Materials on School District Property by Non-School Persons, which is pretty much basically not allowed in the policy. 905, Advertising, which is similarly, and 906, Community Notification of Predatory Offenders, and 907, Rewards. So did everybody get a chance to take a look at those policies? The Policy Committee did not have any changes that they wanted to record, and so this is the first reading of these policies. All right, any questions or any discussion? All right, so I will take a motion to the first reading, to approve the first reading of policies 904, 905, 906, and 907.
I move we approve the first reading of 904, 905, 906, and 907.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We did not have any donations this month. So now we're gonna have a discussion and approval of the first reading, which is a draft, of the 2023-2024 School District Calendar. Jen, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Did you want to say anything about the calendar? We're to that part.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, thank you. Yes, as I said earlier in my report, we will come back with a second and final reading of this next month. You may recall back at the January meeting, I do like coming forward early in the year with the next school year's calendar. It's very beneficial to parents, so they can schedule, you know, their life around school. Again, Erin and I will be at our Administrative Council meeting, that's our consortium schools that all get together, all the superintendents and principals. If anything should come about that's any different than the first draft in front of you for the second draft reading, I will be sure to report that out to you before you make a vote on that. But otherwise, I highly recommend approving this, so then we can get moving on the next one in front of you next month.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? All right. If there are no questions, I will look for a motion to approve the first reading draft of the 2023-2024 School District Calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading draft of the calendar.
Okay, and second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Discussion and Approval of the Resolution for Reductions in Programs and Positions. I'm gonna read it. Jen has already told us about it. It's a resolution that we have to approve, but it's not like we're saying we're gonna do these cuts right now. But it's something that the school district needs to approve in case we need to make any changes. So here's the resolution. Resolution for Reduction in Programs and Positions, School Year 2023-2024. Remember, we'll have to say who wants to make this resolution. Introduce the resolution and move its adoption. Whereas, the School Board of Leroy Osterender Independent School District Number 499 has directed the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and/or positions, and whereas, said recommendations may be considered by the School Board, be it resolved by the School Board of Leroy Osterender Independent Schools Number 499 as follows. To be determined, School Board Meetings, March through June 2023. So any of the meetings between, for March, April, May, and June, we can have this discussion if need be by having this resolution in place. That, is that good, Jen?
That was excellent.
Okay.
Absolutely right.
All right. So does anybody have any, any questions or discussion regarding this resolution?
This is a resolution we do every year.
Yes, okay.
Do you guys have to do a roll call in this?
Yep.
I would move that we adopt the resolution as read.
Okay, so we will do a roll call vote. Arndorfer?
Yes.
Barlinger?
Yes.
Lunning?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
And I will, yes. Deb Rayburn. Okay. So that passes. All right. We are to C, which is a discussion item, which is School Board Committee Reports. And I attended the Community Ed Meeting on Wednesday, February 1st, and Kate Rohr is our Community Ed Director, and she listed all the things that they're trying to get going and getting things started, and they're doing some Intro to Acting, and some Open Gym Times, which have been very, very well attended, CPR Training, Hunter Safety, a possible Babysitter's Class, Soccer, After School Swimming, After School Bowling, the ECFE is looking into possibly doing Touch a Truck, and the next meeting for the Community Ed is in May. All right. So that's Community Ed, and Meet and Confer has not met. Anything from MSHLS?
No.
Okay. Scholarship that hasn't met yet, has it?
No, but we have a Pancake Fundraiser coming up in March.
Okay.
I can't tell you the date off the top of my head.
All right. Are you gonna have that here or in the commision, or don't you know?
I believe it's here.
Okay.
Sorry, lights up.
I'm just gonna go with March. Pancake Fundraiser in March?
Yeah, it's, we don't, we haven't, we've reserved the Commons for March 26th.
Okay.
And it'll be from 9 till 12:30.
Perfect. March 26th. Okay. Certified Negotiations hasn't started yet.
No. Building and Grounds did not meet. We were going to meet today, but so many people are gonna be leaving right after school, and we can't do that.
Okay.
Next meeting will be in March.
Okay. And then, World's Best Workforce, you met?
I was not able to attend that. I was caught in a tree.
Yeah. You were up a tree, literally, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the District Policy Review, I've already talked about that when we went through the policies, and that the Maurer County Collaborative, the next meeting is going to be in March, I believe, the 28th. So I'm planning to attend that and just find out more about it.
Where do they do those meetings?
Maurer County Collaborative?
Yeah.
It's in Austin. I can't remember exactly where. Do you want more information?
No, I was just kinda curious.
Yeah, it's, it's in Austin, but I don't remember the location. I feel like it's the Senior Citizen Center, but I'm not 100% sure. They're gonna be in touch with me confirming when it is gonna happen, but I believe it's March 28th. This list, and Jen has sent it to us a couple of different times, but I think that it's best that we hold off on making any further decisions and filling any places until we get our new board members on, and then in March.
I was wondering what list that was, but, okay.
Oh, the list of.
Committees.
Communities.
There's no really point in us trying to fill in those assignments yet until we get, fulfill our, rest of our board members. Okay? All right. So, my next one is number, letter F, and that is a discussion on having a work session. So that's what this little blurb is here. A lot of the training that I've been at, they've discussed having work or study sessions for the school boards, and I've talked with a number of board members from other districts, from way up north to right down where in Kingsland, and they, some of them have them on a regular basis, like they have a work one and a regular board meeting every month, so they meet twice a month. I don't think we probably need to do that, but I think it would be good for us to have a work session, in particular, for us to better understand the budget. Because when it comes in and is presented to us, it's like in the middle of a business meeting. We have 15 minutes, we can't process it, and there's a lot there, and we need to be a little better informed about the budget, in my opinion. And I talked with Jen about it, and she talked with Christie, and they are all on board with that they'll be here at that meeting, they'll do a PowerPoint presentation for us to learn. Generally, at that meeting, no, like, we're not going to make any budget decisions. It's not a time for a budget decision. It's a time for us to learn about the budget, so that then when they bring us the budget, we know what they're talking about.
Just to understand it.
Right.
I think it's a good idea, just because we've got so many new members.
Right.
Just to understand, not only understand the budget, but to understand school finance in itself, so it just takes a while to understand that.
I met virtually this last week with them, and it's, the way they put it out is, it's ever-changing, and so to be more informed.
Would be beneficial, yes. And I meant to bring my school calendar with me, and I think I forgot to pack it. Let me see. But I wanted to look at a possible date that we could set up, and I forgot to bring my school calendar.
Well, while we were kinda talking about the budget, I think this draft that Jen sent us, I think is good. I mean, it gives you the, kind of the big points as far as, I mean, it doesn't get down to how many, how much money we spend on pencils or whatever, and we don't need that, but I think this is, I think this is good.
Yep. I do as well. The one thing I was going to, I don't know, it might not be a good idea, but it might, but the two line items on the side here, it's kind of redundant of the ones in here. So maybe over here, if instead of dollars, it was like in percent, so you could see how much, how much is, you know, the change.
On the front side of the sheet, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So anyway, I guess I would just say that we ought to just continue with, you know, pursue that.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's really nice.
Yeah.
As compared to like the one that's been coming to us previously, this has.
This is a lot more condensed, a lot smaller, and a lot easier to understand.
Yes. So, well, that I think will be, if we could have this, if you guys are, would like to approve that we have a work study, I think that would be something we could definitely have her have as one of her points of discussion. And I think that it would be good if anybody has specific questions that they want, if they could get them to, I guess to myself or to Jen, just discussing what, what are your questions, what do you need to know more about in order for them to best prepare?
Yep.
And obviously, we have to look at a couple of possible dates, and then see what Christie could, when Christie could come. And then I also was wondering, like, what's the earliest that you're back into town?
What day of the week is Christie here?
If I have, if I have notice, I can, I can make it work.
You can make it back. As I was just thinking for Christie and Jen to both be here, maybe a little earlier time might work. Do you think that would be, well, how about you, Kyle?
Yeah, I can, as long as we have.
Prior knowledge. Okay, so if we look at March.
And also, if you give us enough notice, too, we will definitely have, you know, Deb, as you said, we'll get the questions prepared and answered. We'll also have a PowerPoint and plenty of handouts, too, if needed.
Right.
So if you give us at least, at least two weeks here now.
Yes.
You know, anytime after two weeks, that would be great.
And Christie's usually here on Tuesdays, right?
Jen, Christie's usually here on Tuesdays?
I think both Jen and Christie are usually here on Tuesdays. Right, Jen?
What was that?
Christie is usually here on most Tuesdays, right?
Say that one more time.
Christie's here on Tuesdays, right?
Yes, yes. If we give her, though, enough notice, and I request it as a superintendent, there's no additional cost, and she could be here on a Wednesday night, too, or Wednesday whenever. Those are pretty much mine, Tuesday, Wednesdays, so you just let me know. You guys can think about it, email me some dates, or vice versa. Deb and I can chat me tomorrow on our snow day, and we can send out three or four dates. And then if nobody has a problem, Deb and I could just pick the dates and go from there, too.
We should try to do it earlier in the day, too, because Christie lives a long ways away, and so does Jen.
Yeah. So what does, what does earlier sound like to us? What's, what's doable? 5, 4:30?
I would be, yeah, I mean, I can, I can make anything work. I can make it 3, 4.
We'll probably at least go till 4, so that.
4-ish.
Because teachers and everybody will be doing their.
Sure. I could do 4.
Could you do 4? What, Jen, we're thinking about maybe doing it at 4, so that you and Christie wouldn't have to be out so late?
Thank you. Yes, that, she would be very appreciative of that.
Okay, so we're gonna look at.
You let us know a few dates, and then let me know, and then I can make sure she's secured, and I can email everybody that this date works the best for her, too.
Okay.
Yep, not a problem. Thank you, guys. That's great. This is gonna be great. I love it.
So looking at Tuesdays and Wednesdays. 7th, 8th, 14th, 15th. We have policy meeting on the 14th at 3:15. We could probably be done pretty close to 4. Or we could look at maybe the 7th. What's today? Today's the 21st, so that's a couple of weeks. Or if we can go, if we could go to a Wednesday, if you prefer. So what does anybody prefer?
I can probably make almost anything work, because I'm really busy every day, so it's.
Yeah, which day you're gonna interrupt.
If, if it's no extra cost, the 8th, so.
Guys, the 14th might be good. The reason I say that is we have a board meeting the next week, and our work session will kind of be maybe in the front of your thoughts, and we can kind of keep the discussion going. Just wanna throw that out to you guys.
What were you saying about the 8th would be a better?
The 8th, I'm open all afternoon.
Oh, okay.
But.
All right, so let's, let's, let's put down the possible date of the 8th, and.
14, as Jen suggested.
And 14. And fourteen. Jen, you think we have time to do policy and this? On the fourteenth?
Yeah, sorry, you cut off there, but yeah, we can, we'll make time, we'll set aside time, Christie and I. We, we do sometimes do things on Saturdays, so don't, don't worry about us too much. We'll, we'll make this work for you guys.
The eighth also works well for Dave Barlinger. So I'm gonna put down the eighth and the fourteenth, and you check with Christie and see if either of those would be better. Good with you guys?
Sure.
Alright.
Yep.
I'll send her a text. Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna try for Wednesday, the eighth, or Tuesday, the fourteenth, um, at, depending on what would might work best for Christie. And of course, let's set up, well, I guess we can't set, but if for some reason the eighth didn't work, we could go, you know, like, let's say there was weather still happening. Then we could kinda keep the fourteenth in reserve.
Yeah, it, I could make the fourteenth.
You can make it work, okay. Alright, so I'm gonna, she'll, well, she'll talk to Christie and we will send you all an email regarding the date. And we'll go with this four o'clock and we'll meet down here. Alright?
Yep.
And then we'll have to be sure to post that once we get it finalized. Alright, that is F. Um, so, I am looking for a motion that we have a work session of the School Board on either the eighth or the fourteenth at four eight, uh, four o'clock.
I make a motion that we have a work session on either the eighth or fourteenth at four o'clock.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Now. Nine G. Due to the resignation of School Board Member Chad Bundy, effective today, February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, we need to make a motion to declare a vacancy on our board. So at this time, I will accept a motion. And the motion should say, I make a motion to declare a vacancy on our School Board.
I'll make a motion to declare vacancy on our School Board.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Nine H is Discussion and Possible Action on an Open Seat Appointment Procedures. So, we've been through this. We know what some of our options are. Would anyone like to start a discussion on possible, a discussion on possible action to fill the open seat?
Well, I guess, uh, I would start it like I did last time, I guess. If we, uh, if we wanna take care of it quickly, get somebody here quickly, we could just go with the, the highest vote getter from last fall. And we could do that tonight.
Okay, does anybody have any other suggestions or options they would like to look at?
I would entertain seeing if the previous candidates were all interested again yet or not, and go that route. Because we don't know if any of them were, or if all of them were, are interested for sure or not.
So the previous candidates to fill the position, the, the one that we just had, the ones that we just did?
Yeah.
Do we, I mean, do, are you saying, check with them or just open it up like we did? Say it's open from now until next Friday or whatever?
I guess initially I was thinking just check with them, but, I-
Opening up pushes it out really another month, probably.
If we, um, if we, if we open it up to the candidates who applied a month ago, and just confirm with them that they would still be interested?
Then would it be possible, if we did that, to, to have a discussion or a vote? When we have our meeting on the eighth or the fourteenth, like we just talked?
Yep, as long as we put it on the agenda.
Well, the-
It's a special meeting anyway.
It's a special meeting for the work study. And if we put it on the agenda, we could-
Discuss it at that.
Discuss it and do a vote at that time, if we-
And that would, that would get the person on the-
Yep.
Up, on the board at the same meeting. Because if we approve them now, they're not gonna be on for the March meeting anyway.
Right.
Because it won't be thirty days.
That way we would have, if we did it either the eighth or the fourteenth-
They would then come fill seat in April.
No, yes, yes.
Right.
Yes.
Yep.
The, again, the position would be from thirty days of the appointment until November seventh of two thousand twenty-three during the elections, so it's a-
So as of the eighth or the fourteenth, we would have another board member sitting here too.
We would. Yep, Amanda will be on then too.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Which wouldn't be all bad either.
Yes. Cause we're down to skeleton, a little weird. Some boards do operate with five, but-
Right, but if we, even if we took action tonight, it's not gonna, they can't start until April anyway.
Right.
That's right.
And they could still start in April, at the April meeting if we met on the eighth.
Yeah. And it gives those candidates an opportunity to, um, say, I'm not interested anymore, or yes, I'm still interested.
If they're all not, say, they all say no, I'm not interested. Then, then we have to talk, then we have to post it again. I mean, right.
Yep.
Do we go ahead and say, let's post it now? That way we have those applications for this meeting if we don't have other, you know? You know what I'm saying? So we're not kicking the idea around again if that were the case.
So, if the motion said that, um-
Contact all previous interviewees or applicants? Also post.
And, and if none of them, and if none of them want, are still interested, then-
We've already posted and got that.
But we don't have to post till we find out that they're not interested, right? I don't, I don't think it makes a good idea to post if we're asking them. That's confusing.
I suppose another option would be, we could, we could, uh, take candidate number whatever and appoint them based on their, their approval too. I mean, we could do that too. Cut that timeframe a little shorter. But, you know, I, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but I just thought, that's just another option.
If we do it on the eighth or the fourteenth, then we have another board member that could, could vote on it too. And we're not, we're gonna get the person there at the same timeframe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we wait.
Correct.
Maybe the question is, do we, do we wanna post it? Or do we wanna just ask the candidates if they're interested yet? Or do we wanna do both?
Really talking a couple of weeks. I think we just ask the candidate.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So we need some-
So I, I would move that, we, we designate Deb to find out if the previous candidates are still desiring to be on the board. And that we add it to our agenda on either the eighth or the fourteenth, whatever, wherever we end up with. Is that enough? Does that cover everything?
That's okay. Okay. Does anyone want to second that?
I will.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?